First thing. First thing that we need to do is. The governor's mask update, it's going to sound like a summer rerun, but. The updated CDC guidance continues to state that individuals who are fully vaccinated. May, as a general matter, resume many of the activities that were engaged in. Prior to the pandemic without wearing a mask or staying six feet apart. Except where otherwise required by federal, state, or local laws, rules, or regulations. In response to the recent spread of the Delta variant, however, the CDC's updated guidance does recommend. That even fully vaccinated persons wear masks or face coverings when indoors if other risk factors are present. In light of the information provided by the CDC and in order to maximize protection of vulnerable individuals. From the Delta variant, the Department of Public Health now advises. That a fully vaccinated person should wear a mask or face covering when indoors and not in your own home. If you have a weakened immune system, or if you are at increased risk. For severe disease because of your age or in underlying medical condition. Or if someone in your household has a weakened immune system is at risk for severe disease. Or is unvaccinated. That said, a couple other things. I just want to recognize that we did receive a letter from Connie about this, about the. Building. Barn in the back, I'm going to say, we can share that with you, we have not already shared it with you. Also. I did receive. Connie Witt, I'm sorry, the historical commission. We'll give you a copy, we'll get you a copy, okay, I'm sorry. And I do, a couple other things, I do have. The manager's certificate duly signed. By Rafer Pellegrino as the manager giving Stephen Wood the authority to be able to sign for. For, I guess I want to say. Sixteen Summers Road LLC.
And when was that executed?
This, okay, um, so. This was, I'm, I'm going to say in front of Deborah, Debbie L. Shaw, the Notary Public. It was on the seventh day of June 2021. Is that correct, Rafer?
That's correct.
Okay. And her commission expires, she's a Notary Public, her commission expires 5/20/2027. And I can provide a copy of this also.
Yes.
We can provide a copy to the. Um. Okay, one other thing was, I believe that we had as a little stumbling block was the. Roof mounted solar. And I'd like to clarify. My comments, okay? We, we cannot deny you solar. Okay, I'm going to come right out and say that, that. That right is afforded to you through the Mass General Law, I mean, Mass Law, Chapter 40, okay, and. Section four? Okay. So, and it says that basically we cannot unduly regulate solar. And I don't want to think that I was saying that you can't have solar, what I'm saying to you is that. If solar was to be included. I would be. Looking to the rest of my board, also, we would condition it. Now, my, and this is my feeling, okay, the rest of the board would have to vote on those conditions also. But the condition that I would put is because of the location of that. Facility. I would say that I would want to have hundred-foot setbacks and the 30,000 gallon cistern at a minimum. Okay, and the reason being is if there was ever a fire. The cistern would give the, I would hope, some adequate fire protection water for the, for that area. And the setbacks being. Hopefully enough to buffer between the fire and the residence, residential area behind you or around you, okay? So, that said. Would you like to amend? The application, or would you like to go forward with the application for solar?
Well, that's what I was indicating last time. To make things simpler this time, since this seems to be an issue for the town in light of the Dover amendment and its implications. We withdraw the solar petition, move forward on the storage solely for this purpose of this meeting.
Okay, so, I would like to put forward to a vote for the board, would they accept the amendment? I'm looking for a motion.
Move to accept the applicant's. Amendment to remove. Solar energy system from, to modify the application, to remove solar energy system from the application for a special permit.
All in favor? So, whether this is right or wrong. I have another application, okay, without solar on, it's, it's been revised, would you like to sign and date it?
Yeah, I can do, you don't need it, but how to do it?
Okay, you can sign it, and if you want, if that's Steve's side, it also, again, I don't know if it's needed. With all this law stuff, I should be graduating from Harvard spring? We're going to date that today, Constance. Thank you. All right. All right, um. Would you like to continue?
Yeah, I, well, I think we were toward the end of my presentation, just a couple things, just to recap, since it won't spend a week or two, and it won't be about a few minutes. So, one of the things that I just received a letter from Connie.
Okay.
Regarding the historic significance of the house, and I had gone back, we had done some more research, and I was just kind of interested to note, this is. The Sospaldi family had the houses over 100 years, 1936. And prior to that, this was owned by Josiah Leonard, who threw a grant of land in 1749, titled property. And then in 1750, sold it, so very shortly after that, to the Stevens family, who was perhaps one of the most prominent families in history of Hampton. And they had this property for, till 1936, well, for another hundred years. And they built one of the first homes, so there's a lot of significance to it, to the area, and one of the things we're trying to do is meet the. Town's desire to have a low-impact use and kind of maintain that, you know, cross field, if you will, where you're trying to maintain the. Rollness at the same time, make it be able to be feasible, so. I thought that's important, we stopped and take a look back at, back at a couple of the five significant trades we talked about. A couple other things, which is really significant, today at 5:00, we received, and I think it's been forwarded to you, a letter from Ty and Bond. And those open issues that we just spent a lot of time discussing last time, maybe we waited a week, we wouldn't have gone so far into them. And I had outlined them before, because I, in preparation for the meeting, I'd gone through and I had, don't write these down, because I could simplify it for you. It was 2, 3, 6, 8, 13, 14, 15, 16, 19, 22, 23. As a result of this, and this is the latest one they just gave to us. I think the only ones that need any touching, and they're all satisfied to your experts, Ty and Bond's satisfaction. Most of them are simply just requiring certain detailed drawings to be provided at the time of. Building permits, which is, you know, common take, so I'm just going to run through this, only a couple, do you all have this? It's revised today, October 12th, but the date is September 20th? Might be helpful if this was funny, I just kind of go through a few of those.
It was the one separate.
Probably put it there, no, there we go. Yep.
Do you have an extra copy of that?
Yeah. I think I emailed it. Okay, I emailed the first one to you, I got this at 5:00.
We, so, we haven't had, we haven't even had.
Yeah, that's why I was just going to take a couple minutes to go through, because, yeah, and what it does is.
Thank you.
With regards to the ones we went through last time, those have all been satisfied, and then there's a few, and I was just going to walk through those, because I think it might be. Best use of our time, without going through each one, this would take hours, I suppose. So, number two, on October 8th, the applicant agrees on a condition to provide a recorded easement plan, this is what we discussed last time, remember, regarding. Easement plan or putting it on site, and they say, we recommend the board consider a condition as noted above, so that we either have to provide easement before we go to, if you approve it. And, and just so I don't keep repeating it, this all assumes, I'm not being presumptuous, assuming that if you were to approve it, these are the conditions. And then alternatively, if we can't reach an agreement with the landholder next year in easement, then we would cite it out on our property, so. And that has to meet all your specifications in your, in your planning department, the city ordinances. The next one is number three, the applicant's response. This is the limit of the work line on the diagram, and it was really just a technical thing. They said, we know the limited work line in the revised drawing set remains along the applicant's property line, it's not extend actually by property. And that was just an error in the drawing, so it was, that's been corrected. Number six would be the next one, and number six is the ADA parking. We recommend, the applicant agrees on a condition to provide a construction level drawing to building department. Prior to the issuance of the building permit, and their recommendation, Ty and Bond's is, we recommend the board consider a condition as noted above. So, we would provide that ADA, the drawings for the parking area, and just while I'm on that topic, may recall, last time I, and. Jason, I don't want to point you out, but I think you were asking about where the, the line issue was between, someone was asking about the permeable and the impermeable. So, we've submitted, and we have one for each of you, a new drawing here, so, so it's not light shaded gray, you don't have to see it. And it's, and it's been well documented, that plan with to tie and bond, and that gives you a very clear, the line of your concerns.
Yeah.
I'll just wait one second for habits, so that we'll be able to see.
Thank you.
They're kind of there, sorry.
That's all right.
No. Yeah, as you can see, it's, it's where I'm depicting here, if, where the entrance comes in, and where the emergency exit would be, so it's all this lighter shaded gray. That would be your traditional asphalt.
Yep.
So, impermeable asphalt. So that, I just, I thought that's relevant to where we're going on that topic, number six. And if you go back to the document, you're looking up from Ty and Bond, number eight. They're talking about, remember last time, we talked a little bit about the turning, the width of these. Lanes and how we talked about emergency vehicles to get through it, and what they're saying is the turning movement plan and dimension layout will be provided to him, the fire department. And the applicant agrees a condition to provide the turning movement plan, so, in other words, we'll meet with the fire department, go through a whole plan for how the trucks will access and move it. And we clarified in the drawings that there was some confusion in the drawing, that the dimensions of them are all wide enough. It was just the turning at the end, if you, if you went in great, in great detail on it, it's right up at top, it says. All drive aisles in sheet L4 are wider than 25 feet, line stripping at the end of the road, the units is only through, only there to warn drivers of their units, so there's some confusion. When they were reviewing it before, and all it is is a warning, so, they're all 25 feet, which is actually pretty wide, so. And that was in, you know, Ty and Bond's is very satisfied with that. The next one is number 13, and we talked a lot about, I think, not a lot, but we addressed it at the beginning, that width of the gate coming in 16 feet across to enter, and that was. That'll be right here on your plan, you know, when you enter, and we discussed the two-way at 24 feet, and we also provided the actual drawing, the type of gate that would utilize. All the specs with Ty and Bond, and essentially what they say, the comment has been addressed, we recommend the board consider a condition approval requiring a full set of. Revised drawings, including the fence detail above, so that essentially, we take this plan and we put it in with our final building permit, so that we know the type of fence you're getting. The specific cases to it, which, which quite frankly is way beyond what normally you provide for a planning board approval on this kind of fence, that's basically this level. But we wanted to be over inclusive, if you will. Then I go to number. 14, page 6. This is the topic we got into 11, I'm feeling we're going to talk a little bit more about, this is the permeable and impermeable. So, the applicant will provide construction details, foundations, and this is the plan I gave you to talk about, so it goes to, to separate conditions in here. And we agree as a condition to provide construction level drawings to the building department, they, they say they recommend, recommend that satisfactory. Number 15. This is the electric data, and remember, last time we got a little confused, 15 ties into 19, which ties in, I think it's 20, 21, but. I made a cheat sheet note for myself, telling you which one that was, which, so that was 15. 20, 21 relate back to 15, so, I'm going to touch on 15, and then just remember, we'll go back to it, and it just says, the applicant. Will provide the requested construction details for electric, electric infrastructure as part of the building permit. And they're saying that's, that should be fine, remember, last time we talked about our whole lighting plan, and that's just the actual specification, so we'd be locked into it. Number 16. That's the photometric plan was included on the sheet, and the additional information was provided to the applicant before, and again, they're saying the comment regarding that. Has been addressed, so last time they wanted to see more, we gave more detail, and they're satisfied with it. So, that's fairly straightforward. Number 19 goes back to 15, like we talked about, I'm sorry, not 19, excuse me, that's the spot grades. So, this goes to the permeable and impermeable, and they're saying they may require some spot grades in the impermeable area, that means this light. Colored gray we're talking about, and it's, our response was spot grades have been added, we gave them the plan, the layout of it. Showing where they, in their revised stormwater report, showing the spot grades, grades, excuse me, to the main gate. And they said, we recommend consider a condition approval requiring a full set of those to be included, so in other words, what we provided is what they wanted, and now they're saying, okay. If the board approves it, provide those as a. As part of the plans. Number. 20, they just relate it back to 15. 21 to relate back to 15, so those are just tied in with that, and they're saying those are satisfactory, so it's 15, 20, and 21. And then 22. This is the, now we get into the site plans, and down below, we agreed as a condition to provide construction level drawings, we talked about this last time. So, complete construction level drawings, and again, they, they find that that's fine, and this goes with. The Mass DOT standard stop sign post that we talked about, putting in the area, so that's not a major issue, but it was something that was over. 23. We agree that the pro, this is, you know, this is kind of interesting, and I'm just going to take a moment, because I think it's, was reflecting on this one, this is your consultant. Who's essentially saying it's not us, this is such a low-impact use, they only require five, it only requires five parking spaces. I can't imagine many other uses you possibly could have on a site of that nature, we're going to have that low of an impact. And what they say is, we agree the proposed use is not, is not anticipated or required in simple parking, obviously, they defer to the board on. The five spaces, but they're saying, it is our opinion that proposed parking spaces would be adequate. So, they come right out and tell you that it's going to be adequate for this use, and, and, and this just goes back to the overall tenor of trying to find something that fits. In the site, it's low-impact, I understand there's opposition, I understand there's always going to be opposition to, to new development. But when you're balancing the benefits to the community, this is far more advantageous for a whole slew of reasons. Than other potential uses that could go there, because at some point, whether it's this use, it's going to be utilized for some purpose. So, I would suggest that this is interesting, that this comes from, you know, the, the independent third-party, Ty and Bond has a very good reputation, so. It's not something that we could persuade in any way. Then we go to the stormwater drainage, and kind of a little confusing, because they'll remember differently. So, I'm going to drop down to page nine, and all of these have been addressed. And you go all the way, and just the simple cheat sheet, so all the subcategories we went over individually last time, they've all been addressed. And if you go right to the last one on page nine, we recommend this information to provide at this time to determine if the defined limits of permeable asphalt. Per comment 14 and grading detail, detail in 19, result in requirements to include additional drain, stormwater drainage. We provided all that, and then last time, there was confusion about a bunch of technical terms, but essentially, whether there's certain filings that have to take place. And the end result was, we don't, we've agreed to, we have to do this anyhow, we agreed to file what's called a swap, it's basically a plan talking about how we're impacting the land. And that's what they recommended, the variant, we recommend the board consider that as the condition of approval. So, the swap plan meets those requirements, if you have specific requirements about the storm waters, we, as we finish up, I'm happy to have Carlos addressing. Specifically, I know he kind of addressed a lot of that before, but I'm going to give you my layperson's read of it, which I think is a much easier way to kind of digest it. That you're going to have your. Permeable asphalt all in here, impermeable there, there'll be some stormwater drainage tying it into the drainage, bringing, you know, into the main drainage, excuse me. There are other considerations going around the exterior, which all have been addressed in the report, which Ty and Bond says. A is appropriately done, and B, they agree with its findings, most importantly, that. Permeable asphalt in this area will adequately deal with the surface water runoff, because of the type of soil that it's situated in. And so, bottom-line result is they're saying, yes, we agree, if the board does want to approve this use, that's an appropriate way to handle these issues. Those are the kind of, sorry, the technical things just to get through, because we could get lost in these reports, but I have four, and by the way, sometimes. The, coming back a second time is helpful, so we have four separate reviews back and forth with Ty and Bond, so they've vetted this in great detail. This last one, you know, on top, as a result of our last meeting, so we addressed everything that we talked about last time, that we even had open issues, and now we've done. Addressed to their satisfaction, obviously subject to the board's approval. And we had two more comments that I wanted to make. And I'm happy to turn it over, and, and I don't want to dwell on it too much, but. We're maintaining the historic property, keeping the trees, we have a low-impact use, low parking, low traffic. And we're going to maintain from the streetscape, which is most important, a residential historic feel with the black door. Bring it all, full circle, black door tied in with a black fence, tied in with the landscape, playing a plan in front. And without dealing with the solar at this point, it just makes it a very simple site, and remember, the height drops by two feet, I mean, yeah, well, approximately two feet. From what we talked about before, so from the streetscape with the decline. You're essentially not going to see what's behind it, which I think is kind of a win-win situation. So, with that, I don't have any further points, I do have an expert here to talk about permeable and impermeable, if you have those questions. And in anticipation of one particular board member who might have those questions, kind of did some homework, and if I can approach the board. Which, I have a study here that I'd just like to walk through with you for a minute, I hope I ever know. There's one more here, Tim. This is a, this is a really interesting. Use of the permeable asphalt that was used in Province Town, and they actually tracked it over a number of years, and anybody who's been to Province Town, the Cape Town, it's a very. Dense commercially, commercial area along the ocean, and they were having pollutants in the water from surface water runoff from all the commercial use. And they went in and did this plan, and they used the permeable asphalt, and the results of the plan are remarkable. That they have a decrease in the pollution to off, off-site from that area, and this is, this is done by Mass DEP. Which is best practices, which I talked about last time, and this is just something that says that this is the direction that, that towns that have. Real strong environmental concerns are going toward with, in line with Mass DEP's. Recommendations and the success of them, coupled with the fact that I, I think I explained last time, we are experienced with this type of installation. We've done a school of, I think it was 90,000 square feet of parking or something of that nature, magnitude, for exactly this reason, located on the Merrimack River. And, and it's been an absolute success since, and with environmental concerns on the site, so we had a double whack there. So, I bring this just because I thought it was something very pertinent to our conversation. Again, it's a third-party source explaining, this isn't something that we came up with. This is something that is the direction of the industry and what Mass DEP wants us to use for this type of development. So. I'll leave it with that, I just thought it was. Very helpful as far as guidance on this topic. Yeah.
Yeah, unless you have questions, I'm working, yes, I'm sure.
I could talk forever if you want.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay.
So, I do, obviously.
Yeah.
On the, actually, the first thing I wanted to touch on was the fire department plan. And I forget what they referenced to that, but basically showing turning radiuses of the truck. That's kind of the only one I have an issue with, excepting before the issuance of a building permit versus before the approval by the planning board. I'd like to see that have fire department buy-off, because if we don't have fire department buy-off, you guys are saying that. It'll meet the turning radius, then we approve it contingent on, and then the fire department comes back and says, well, no, you got to pull. You know, 20 feet off of this end of this building to make the radius, now we're changing. Now you're changing the layout of the buildings after the planning board's approved.
Well, not if you, if you look, just give me one second to find that one. Eight, because they, in the. Yeah, that, that's what I was mentioning before, but I wasn't in the detail, so, before, we, we gave a reference between 20, 30 feet. We've come back now and given them the 25 feet, and we, and we've showed the turnaround radius, which is, which is acceptable. Any fire department anywhere, I mean, granted, we'll go get a plan with that, and we have to do that, but that's the, and Carlos is stupid, but that's, that's the. More than adequate sizing, for example, the school that we did in Lowell, the back axis into where they fired, we had to have a fire loop for them to come in. Was less than 14 feet, so they can come in, in with it, where their dumpster was at the back end, 25 feet. I mean, just do a math, I'm not an expert at it, but we know that's large enough, and if you want to make the condition that. That, that gets submitted before we submit our building plan, their sign-off, I'm happy to do that, so we don't waste the town's time. But to come back again, now we come back, you know, it's.
My only concern is if it changes the layout of the buildings, I'm going to.
Then we have to come back to you.
That's.
I understand, we're willing to take that risk, because I, I, I'm comfortable at 25 feet. I'll be shocked if there's an issue, then I'm just going to be very frank with you, so my youngest daughter dates a firefighter, so he had to look at this with someone from the Springfield department. They went through it, and they're like, oh, no, he drives one of the big trucks, so I feel real, he's wrong, he's out.
Yeah, that's based on my concerns, if it changes the layout of.
And that wasn't a formal opinion, maybe, by the way, I want.
Not in trouble.
Absolutely, yeah, no, so that, that was my only concern, but if you guys are, are.
Yeah. Pretty helpful, very helpful. I'm sorry, we're not taking questions right now, okay? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not going to take questions from the crowd right now.
Okay, then my, my next. My next question is probably going to go to your engineer. The, the whole chorus, your permeable paving thing, it's not that I don't believe it works, it's just how do we hold? That development. that development accountable? If it does fail, when it does fail, because you know as well as I do, at some point in time, it's going to have to be replaced, right? So my concern with that is do, is there a backup plan that could be designed into this that will provide either a visual? I'm assuming this is all pitching in and if the permeable pavement fails, there will be ponding within the site. Is that correct?
If it fails?
If it, if it, if it eventually fails and
We can, if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, yeah. No, I just wanted to confirm one thing because one of the specific requirements to tie bond, I just wanted to make sure I was correct. Is, so you want, you want the permeable as flat as possible. If there is ponding, obviously you're assuming it's, it's not working properly. But there can be ponding for short periods because it's just a natural fall.
I'm just trying to figure, I'm not an expert on it, so I'm trying to figure out what happens if this fails. What are the warning signs that it needs to be ripped up and replaced? And
You're talking down the road.
Yes, yes, ten years from now, five, ten years from now.
Yeah, so I think that you're, I'm sorry, Chris Chamberlain, merch design group, engineer. I would say that yes, as long as we're not talking about ponding in the midst of, of hurricane type rainfall where, you know, instantaneously there may be surface water. But after the cessation of rainfall, if there's observed ponding over time, and clearly that's an indication of something going on and remedial action.
And, and where my head's going is I want to make sure that this design five, ten years down the road, if, if the pavement gets, needs to be replaced, that it's not going to be shedding off onto a budding properties, which I assume is the case based on your general.
And that's what, that was, this is unique. In other words, you don't do permeable asphalt everywhere because of the type of soil that's under it. And that's why they did the orange and they reworked it. And so if there's a replacement, you can replace permeable asphalt. You know, just like anything else.
Right, right.
So it, it, but it doesn't, it's almost impossible, please correct my mom, it's almost impossible for it to, to have shirts of clothes impact an off, an off take on, you know, a budding property, especially given the dimensions of the site.
Yeah, no, that's, that's accurate. And then I'll also point out that on this edge of the site, in the most recent grading plan, we've actually created a low area here because we had concerns about the potential for actually water from the grass not being able to move around the site. So we've actually created a depression here for that rainfall that falls on the vegetated area. And so that would act as a barrier as well.
That's, I mean, basically I'm trying to say, all right, how do we stop if it fails, when it eventually needs to be replaced? How do we stop sheet flow off?
And, and I would also highlight that actually, Rafer's tenants are going to be the ones that would be impacted by that movement of water. Because if there is ponding, then the first place it's going to reach is actually the rental units before we talk about where the opposite is.
So the, the, you want to belt suspenders and I guess what he's telling you, that's what it is. We've already done the depressed areas, almost similar retainage.
No, just let him speak, please.
And then the revised grading plan will shoot is that? I'm, or did we get that?
In the revised greatest report?
Yeah, which I didn't, yeah, stormwater drainage report. Yeah, this was my
Not the latest one that was just revised.
So if you could, I, I, I've got a question, okay? And it goes back to tying bond again, and I'm looking at this plan. So the plan that you just provided to us tonight. That's, is that short rating? Yes, so, okay, go ahead. Let's, let's
Just to be a little simple, is that the creating, first of all, this is higher than our site, so the waters are higher than our occupation. And everything that is developed is draining into the site.
It, it appears that way. In other words, you're high grade and correct me if I'm wrong, please, I want to understand this. Down in the if you will, the lower right hand corner, you've got two fifty-three.
Exactly.
So two fifty-three, two fifty-two, two fifty-one. So what we're looking at is about a three foot drop in maybe thirty to twenty feet.
To our site.
To, to your site.
Towards our site.
And where you have LP two forty-nine point six-three, go up from the test pit one. All of those two forty-nine is that?
Those are all, it's all flat.
So big, so that's what you're grading to.
And it's, it's flat and even slight slope from each one of the units towards the center. Very slight, like a one percent. The idea is that, again, like Chris mentioned, if you have a huge storm, you want the water not to be right at the edge of the buildings, move inwards, but all that water will
Right, so if you have, so yeah, so the two fifty is the storage unit slats and you're at two forty-nine, what's, so you're you know, a third of a, third of a foot difference?
You would need to basically flood this whole site like two feet high.
To get
To get water to go back into like the neighbors.
That's the statement.
Yeah. And in the entrance in the area that's impermeable, what we've done, we have a high point right at the gate, so all that water comes back into us.
Okay.
The area from that point back, it drains exactly how it drains today, so it drains back to the road, but we haven't changed the grade in there, the drainage. The same with this path, we've graded everything towards our impermeable surface except for the first area, which is all currently paved and currently drains into the grass area, doesn't cause a problem. So yeah, all the drainage basically goes into the site. And last but not least, the buildings are in the middle. So this area, this is higher, this is lower in general throughout the site. Even when you get to here, we've created low points on all this site. So that there's no water exiting the site from that, from, from the north to the north.
So the next question I have is those buildings that are around the perimeter and all of the buildings, I guess is what I'd like to ask. Is there a foundation, in other words, a four foot frost wall?
Exactly.
Okay.
And, and there's going to be, one of the comments that, that Titan Bond talked about was how we're going to be, or that we should be impermeabilizing those frost walls and we will, that's one of the comments we had. And there are several ways you can do that, but one of the common ways is to include insulation, foam insulation with a wrap with plastic basically at the bottom of the frost wall and at the front of the frost wall. The idea is that no water that can meet the frost wall or underneath. Okay, so you're, you're basically avoiding any water being underneath and and, and at the frost wall, we're four feet deep at that point, so water should be, not going to freeze, yeah, it's going to freeze down there.
And in the, the type of soils that are here, okay, the, you should not see a ponding or a mounding or anything, they should dissipate and just drop straight down.
One of the, when you say that, and there's different terms here, because mounting, I know, can be, when you concentrate stormwater and you put it in one spot and you try to drain it through there, that creates mounting, meaning the groundwater tends to get closer. One advantage that permeable paving has is that you're not concentrating the water in one spot. Literally, you're spreading that whole area. So if you had a, you know, this whole area would go, for instance, an example, if you had a, a pond at the corner, you're concentrating all this area into one small area. That's when you start getting those issues. The advantage we have here, again, we're infiltrating the water right on the, when it lands in the, in the soil and the pavement. So we're not concentrating, we're doing actually totally the opposite. And the soil, soil conditions are extremely weathering, they're really good during soils for this type of application, actually. This is the perfect soil for this type of application. We don't have that everywhere. It's, there are other situations where you don't want permeable asphalt, but in this case, it's like the perfect solution.
I mean, you will get some, when, when we talk about mounting, but between each of those rows of buildings, because there is a foundation, there will be some buildup of water between each building before it dissipates down through the four foot into six, eight feet, whatever.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can bring Chris on this with infiltration rates that we witness for that type of soil, they're very, very, very high, so.
Right, so I dug the test pits myself.
Okay.
Absolutely clean gravel. I, I didn't bother with an infiltration test because I wouldn't have been able to fill the ring. What we modeled in our hydrocat is based on the most restrictive layer at the top, the lummy sand, of course, we're going to remove when we put the pavement in there, but we actually used that as our infiltration rate to be conservative. Two point four inches an hour. The standard rate for the gravel was then more, more like eight point six and the reality is that, that this is probably taking water much faster than that. Given what I saw in the whole.
And did you have a seasonal high groundwater level that you found?
Below the six feet that we dug, dug the hole to, there was not a sign of, of water.
Okay. One minute, I'm just going to check with the rest of the board.
I'm good. I just wanted to, the reason I asked, I, I needed you guys to make the statement is to point out folks surrounding properties are three foot.
It actually helps my discussion about drop, which you pointed out by the numbers. You won't see, you barely be able to see them from the fence.
Yeah, you're dropping. One minute, I've got one more question on permeable pavement, okay? When we have a high load, let's say a fire truck or a truck that comes in there with a abnormal amount of material or whatever, how does it stand up against that when you're turning?
So in our experience, we have two locations that have had high load. One of them is a parking lot that was done in the last two, two years. There is a dumpster truck, this is a seventy park, stall parking space for an apartment, public housing project. So there's a lot of traffic coming in here. There is two times a week pickup from a big dumpster truck. We have not seen any damage on the asphalt there. The other example that I know that Bass Builders has worked on in the school, the areas where we're, there's public buses literally going through the same area that's permeable asphalt and we haven't seen any damage that you could say, so. That said, on a very, very hot day, I've built a few fire stations in my day and permitted them in a very, very hot day with any asphalt. And if you have a fully loaded fire truck and you turn the wheel, you will scarify the asphalt, I mean, any asphalt, permeable or non-permeable.
Okay.
But again, with common use and in here, we're looking at very low use normally vehicles that are just for the person who's bringing in supplies, so we don't foresee fire trucks, we don't foresee loaded, fully loaded, loaded fire trucks. And if there's an emergency, then you know, the client will deal with that. And school buses or these types of vehicles. So first of all, we have not seen examples of it being damaged. And then second of all, we're not going to have that type of traffic here. Might happen in an emergency, but it's never going to happen as the regular cycles, like you get in a school or you would get in a, you know, trash, trash removal area.
And I'll, I'll just add some color commentary to that. It's sort of the early days of permeable pavement, it was recommended that they not even be used in drive lots in the parking lots. And there's been a lot of work, a lot of it done at University of New Hampshire on different mixes, different structures to try to improve that. And those recommendations are sort of not, not with the times anymore. There's still, it's still preferable in those cases where traffic is lower, the traffic is lighter, but the pavement's gotten a lot stronger. As the designs have advanced over time.
And, and how does it get stronger?
That's a material science question that, that I haven't delved into the exact details, but they've been working on research on different mixes that retain permeability and improve the strength. Different admixtures.
Okay, because I think one of the comments from Ty and Bond, and, and again, if we went back, was the the layers that you had. So the question becomes the, the open space of those layers. And I, I think they did refer back to the New Hampshire study, University of New Hampshire. So have you opened those up or tightened them up, the, of the space?
So I guess I don't follow.
In other words, the voids, the number of voids between each piece of material, is it more open or is it tighter? And I'm asking, I'm going to tell you why I'm asking is because the contamination of you were talking using some de-icing compounds. How's that? Yeah, magnesium chloride. How does it filter that out and does it impact it?
Sure, so there are a couple of things going on here. The, the sort of, let's call it the, the full build section out of the Massachusetts Stormwater Handbook includes your pavement and then what's called a choker course, which is stone and then a layer of gravel as a filter layer. That's what's doing most of the hard work of your filtration. The University of New Hampshire has recommended that in cases of residential driveways and other uses where the traffic level is relatively low, that it is preferable to instead use the subgrade if the soils are appropriate with the choker course and pavement on top. And in, in particular, in this case, the gravel that we're using essentially meets the spec that we would have used for that filter course. So instead of pulling up twelve to fifteen inches of gravel, screening it and laying the exact same material back down, we're utilizing the existing subgrade below the choker as that filter course. Okay, that makes sense.
So, yes, so basically you haven't altered the soil structure in a manner that would allow more contamination through.
I would say no. And again, Ty Bond's latest letter, we addressed the question of the amount of storage.
Any other questions from the board?
I was just wondering about the security kiosk. Is it, what is it? Is it just like a keypad or is it actual?
Well, we're thinking it was a keypad, type of situation with an intrapom, if somebody's inside, so they can communicate. And nowadays, that's why we'll have better details. Nowadays, they have these very sophisticated kind of Yeah, and you have either an app or a dumble and then that's how you go. Nobody's going to, yeah, that's not a kiosk in that sense where somebody's going to be inside or anything. It's just going to be a, a security.
Yes, thank you. Well, we're talking about the grading and the flow of any runoff water. But is the building itself at any risk because we're putting impermeable pavement around it?
So it was the opposite. Actually, it is the recommendation from Titan Bond and from Mass DEP is that if you have houses with basements, that you stay ten feet away from it. So that's why we've kept all that area impermeable so that we don't have permeable asphalt right next to the house and it's ten feet away. That's all they ask. In addition to that, they also want us, they wanted us to, there's a well and they want us to keep a certain distance from a well, hundred feet. So that's, again, that's why we've kept that whole area around it so that it's permeable, so that the water can infiltrate there and it will go into the rest of the system.
And with the permanent paving directly around the, the buildings and the grading, is there any risk that we'll have more water going into the building?
No, no, they will actually, the building is a high point.
It is a high point, okay.
And then all this drainage goes back from the fence line, yeah, oh, of course, this way will go into our permeable asphalt. So that water will drain in. And the house is a high point in all these, so it's about a quarter and a half fire, I think, for the rest of it.
All right, and then do you have any numbers or data or anything on the expected lifetime of this this permeable asphalt?
I mean, I can, I can send it to Chris. I would, the only comment I'm going to say is it is very similar to normal asphalt in that sense. I mean, there is a lifespan of asphalt that you would have to repave. I mean, there is a lifespan of asphalt that you would have to repave. But that happens in roads and in parking lots that are constantly being trafficked on. Here, the lifespan will be much longer because there's not enough traffic here like you would have in a road or a parking lot. The other detail is that, sorry. So the question was on the lifespan. The, the second thing is that because we are not creating puddles at all. So one of the reasons that you have problems with asphalt is that if you have a puddle, you have water there. You have freeze thaw cycles because it's just staying there. It just eventually will, will crack it or will damage it. In this sense, we are infiltrating all that water immediately, so we're not keeping any puddles. There's a lot of videos of how this works. Literally, you can turn on a hose from a fire truck and put it on the asphalt and it will, you won't see a puddle there. It will literally absorb it immediately. So again, those are the things that I think will help the, the lifespan of the asphalt itself. But Chris will answer it second.
And I would just say that, you know, sort of the, some precedence that you can look at is sort of the original case study for permeable pavement with Walton Pond, which is I think now 40 years old and still working. UNH, University of New Hampshire has been having an example up there for I think at least 20 years. And then more locally in Amherst, what used to be New England Environmental, now SWCA, installed permeable pavement parking lot. We think it was about 15 years ago and that's still working great. You know, I will say that, that the owner notices that it is a little bit slower than it was on day one, but the water still goes right in.
Okay, just a couple of other things. You, you mentioned that you're gonna have contracts with the people, the tenants of the building so that they will not store hazardous waste, but and will that, do you have an idea of what's in that contract? Is it gonna include explosives? What is it going to include in that contract?
The, the use of the building officers.
I'm not talking about the building, I'm talking about the.
And then, and it's, yeah, you can't have any, any explosives, any, anything that is environmentally contaminated, hazardous, something of that nature. We have a, there's a, there's a national storage facility contract with disclaimer language. It's modeled quite off of that.
And is that gonna be posted?
It will be posted, right, we posted it and obviously although there's not gonna be someone there every time, you'll be able to make periodic inspections.
Do you plan to have periodic inspections? You do.
Yes.
How often would those?
They, you do it random. So in other words, there's two different, there's a bunch of different policies on how to do it, but the ones that seem most practical are random. When people come in, you randomly checking, they know they're subject to that. And then oftentimes when they want an access, you might be there, they go in there, you can look at it. I mean, a number of different things. We don't want it as much as I know the town doesn't want it. And that's part of our, it's with your insurance, it's one of the requirements you have to have in your contract with your insurance.
Right, okay. And what is the dumpster being used for?
Actually, I'm so glad you brought up, I was gonna get up, I was just waiting for this question to be done. You remember, remember when I started, I said, we, we don't want it. We put it on there initially because we didn't know how the board felt about it. And I said that that was like à la carte for the board. We actually want to withdraw it. I was gonna formally make that, or suggest that you approve without it. We don't want it, but it was something we had, they originally put on the plan. And the more we investigated into it, we didn't, we don't want it at all. We don't need it.
So if, if that's the case, and when, let's say I drive up to one of these units and I'm, you know, organizing my stuff and I have stuff to throw away, where do I throw it away?
In your truck and you take it off site. Most of the more modern storage facilities don't.
Don't allow for any trash.
And, and that decreases us having a truck come in and take the dumpster and be very frank with you, it decreases our cost.
Okay. And the gate out on Summers Road, it's 24 feet, is that correct? And what, as I look at this on the map anyway, I'm out on Summers Road and I'm looking through the gate and this is a wire mesh gate.
Wire mesh, yes.
I'm gonna be able to see through that. What is it I'm going to see?
Well, if we, first of all, just so we're clear, and the plan shows it's not on Summers Road.
No, I realize that, right.
I know what the actual number of feet are, about 20 feet or so. So the only thing you'll see through here, if you look at this, you'll see straight back all the way back maybe one, two, almost four times the width of, from the street to the fence. Three more times back, you'll see just this, this edge of this.
So we'll see, we'll see one of the buildings.
One, one of the, one of the, and if it's a requirement we could do, we've done it for other projects with the, you know, the block, it's like a mesh inside of this, the, the, it's like, they're not mesh, it's like actually vinyl. They're like little slots, yeah, so it's, so it's flush across. That's not a problem, front side of the property or for that amount on the side, side as well. Because that gives you, I actually like that better because that gives you that kind of scene, you know.
Where is this mesh again?
It's not mesh, it's vinyl, they're slats, they slide.
Where is this, on the gate?
On, on the fence itself. The gate, the, the gate is a fence basically, just all it does is go on a roller.
Okay, so we're talking about the same thing, gate and fence, same thing.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a fence like you're thinking, you know, it's, it's just, imagine you have a fence and it slides on a roller, comes across.
Okay, so you're saying I'm not gonna be able to see through that?
If we put those slots on, if that's what the board wants, we're happy to do that.
And how, how high is the gate?
Six feet.
Six? Now, the, the units themselves, I believe you said that they were gonna be green and bronze.
Green and bronze, yes.
Okay, what do you mean by bronze? I mean, there's bronze and then there's mustard.
I wanted to defer to the artist.
It's, it's a very dark color. With the solar, it was supposed to be almost like a black, it has a color tone to it, so it's a brownie bronze. We're trying to make it go. The green would be way darker than 100 and some black, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's like, really, we, well, do we have that image? We have an image of a, of a build that we think we would try to use, but you might not. The production doesn't show.
Yeah, it's really dark, but it's super dark. I have, I have any 11 by 17 things, they look a little lighter. It's a very dark brown and a very dark, like 1 degree. That's what they had in there.
Okay.
This is not, this is, please, don't look at this. This was just for the illustration to show how the solar would work. We're not doing solar anywhere, so this is not part of it.
So, so looking at the building, we're not seeing the white vinyl hedging or anything like that?
Contrasting doors and trim, we're not doing red and orange, we're not doing, it's gonna be a bronze deep color. Obviously, you know, the neighbors, everybody don't want to look at it, so the darker it is, the better it goes away.
Is this, is the building or, yeah, the, the house staffed five or seven days a week?
The staffing, the five.
Five, just five, so on Saturday they will not.
Only, only, there's a call thing, someone called, I mean, people would be there on Saturday occasionally, just like a regular office, but it would be normally.
Normally not be manned up.
Correct.
Right.
I said at the reciprocal, that's the same result.
I'm sorry?
I said the reciprocal, I normally.
Yeah, okay, all right. Is there a plan for crosswalks at these entrances? I know there's a stop sign, but in front of that, where it's the road, is there a plan for crosswalks?
We have not had a plan for crosswalk. I mean, we don't anticipate there any.
There's a requirement for a sidewalk in the bylaw.
No sidewalk, I thought you said crosswalk, I'm sorry.
Crosswalk, because.
It'd be across the driveway.
If I remember, yeah, across the driveway.
Oh, across the driveway, I thought you meant across.
Oh, no, 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 across, sorry, across the driveway.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
So there's, there's a requirement for a, for a sidewalk from one point to the other. It'll go from.
Our property.
You got it, yeah. Any other questions?
Oh, I have one more. Is there electricity inside the units?
Not inside, remember we explained last time in the exterior, every three or I think it was two to three units, there's a dimmer that goes down in the lighting plant he went through that gives them like access to light now, but not inside.
But not inside.
Because generally, we, you don't want people there at night, but not.
There are no electric outlets?
Not inside, no, but on the outside, every four or five doors that will be lined for safe, for doing some cleaning, power washing. So there will be some on the outside, but the cameras will pick up sometimes if they're trying to play with it.
And, and I also read that you're not gonna allow any car maintenance work.
No.
There.
No, no changes.
Right. And, but with the electric outlets, is certainly the ability for somebody to plug in a power tool and do something.
Sure, if they, if they try, yeah, the cameras should pick it up, we know their number, talk to them. We tried to patrol it.
Had we requested a line of sight model, I'm sorry, I can't recall.
No, I didn't.
Had we requested a line of sight model for this facility?
I don't believe we have. None. Oh, because we didn't get into it. That's right. Okay. You'd like to see a line of sight model?
Yeah, I think it would be helpful. From the perspective of the butters as well as from the street. I think we have a good idea from the street, but a line of sight model.
Conceptual drawing of what you're gonna see. And we have. You have one at an angle.
Yeah, we have several. I mean, we did all from basically the front, we didn't do it from the butter because again, we're, you're not gonna see anything from the body. And I just wanna make sure that people understand. The, the fence goes all the way around and then we have a evergreen strip that goes right in front of the fence. And then the whole site is about two feet lower. And the fence is six feet high. And these units are gonna be eight feet high, so you're not really gonna see the units. On the, on the front, we, we showed this last time where we had the front. We wanted to make sure that people understood that we were keeping the front of the, of the, of the house the same. And we are keeping no fence running in front of the house, so the fence goes to the edge of the house.
You were asking this question, so if you don't mind us getting. This is, this is what I was saying, when you're spinning the road going back, it runs to the side of the house, not in front, not on the road. That was a plan we changed from the beginning so that you see how it's black there, that's how it would be.
The fence was not attached to the house, the post is.
Yeah.
As a driveway.
Right, right, so just. And you're, and I understand your request for a sight line. Normally you might want up here, a simple map of it to be down. Yeah. And so that's why he tried to show, along with the planting, plantings up.
Any other questions? Okay, I recognize two people, yeah. Yes. If you stand up again. Standic Road.
My concern is the material they want to put out on the parking lot, how's that gonna affect in January the ground frozen if we get a rainstorm? And or if we get an early melt before the ground is thawed out, the water's gonna run right up the property.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the University of New Hampshire has done decades of studies on these materials, including food filters and it actually performs great in winter. The pavement, because the water is going through it and not sitting around, it doesn't freeze up and continues to form just as well through the winter.
Yes, I'm sorry, you had a question, yes.
I wanted to.
Wait a minute, you gotta tell us your name.
Norm Willette, Meadowbrook Lane. I just wanted to know where the depression was that was gonna collect any runoff, if there was possible runoff, if it was gonna be located behind the residence there.
So what, it's not the depression that's gonna collect any of this runoff. What we did was, we want to have a slight depression right behind these units so that the water from the grass. Meadowbrook Lane, yeah, there's, there's two, about two houses right here.
Yes.
So basically, it's me and the other neighbor.
Yep.
So it's behind me. That's what I wanted to.
And a slight depression that it is, it's just not the grass, it only collecting water from the grass. The idea is that any water from the grass doesn't go straight into our building.
I understand, I just wanted to know where.
Yes.
Is that behind the fence?
Yes, yes, yeah.
It's on, it's on our property.
On our property, behind the fence, behind every, the screen.
And that's, that's protection coming our way because.
That side is higher than ours.
Which is better for them because it drains all the water.
Yeah.
Wondering from the people about when they abandoned their property and restored it, do you have auctions there? Or what do you do with the material that's in the units?
You have the, we have the right to remove it off site and have it on some other site.
Again, Peter.
Here, Matt, in a recording, yes. In regards to the structures, it's probably 25 feet for any building to get around there. Fire truck's a 30 or 40 feet long, so that's gonna be extremely tight to get around there without damaging any building or trucks.
So what we, there's 25 feet on these lanes, there's 30 on the main lane as you come in. And there's enough turning radius to go all the way around with a fire truck.
We're, we're, Peter, we're gonna, we'll talk to, we'll talk to the chief, okay? And we're gonna have him give us some feedback, okay?
And we've done some turning radius work for it, just to know exactly if it worked or not, people we said it works.
I, I think. Go ahead, ma'am. Stand up and recognize, what is, what's your name? Okay, so.
What stops, I, I've observed a few of the neighboring storerooms and I watched people go in, go out, they punch in. And I've never gave it a thought, nobody can mount a mast if they were doing it or anything. I never thought about the soap problem issue, okay, so that's kind of the question. But what stops someone from sticking a motorcycle with speed? Allowing gasoline prices going up, people are worried gas now, what's gonna stop them? You don't go in, I saw no one coming out of these buildings and I saw traffic. I mean, it's a legitimate question.
I'm not sure if you were here last time, but we went into great detail on our security plan. Every unit is viewed on a camera, which is 22 feet, which gets fed in, so you'll be able to see anything that's accessed. Certainly that magnitude beside a automobile or motorcycle or thing of that nature. Now, am I gonna tell you that nobody could ever slip something in and get it by? No, but no different than if they go into a strip mall plaza and do something there and change, change the rail there. If they go into, you know, a, a used car unit, sales that could be there, some other use that could be there. I think that it's highly unlikely that happens. I think we have very good policies in place to try to stop it from happening. It's certainly not what we want, not what you want. I think we're aligned in that regard.
I'm gonna open, and, and I'm gonna try and end this meeting by 8 o'clock, okay? So I just wanna let you know. Counselor, you, I'm sure you have something to say.
Yeah. So first off, I just need to object to the process of kind of renewing the application at this point. I think administratively, that needs to go through the entire process again for purposes of getting this done tonight. That just needs to be clear for the record, I think it provides ground for appeal, et cetera. So I think the, the way I'd like to try to have the board look at this is to look at themselves as essentially the investment advisory board for the town, right? Look at this project. You folks have the discretion as the planning board. The whole purpose of your being here is, is to listen to the townspeople around you and make judgments about whether this really is the best investment for the town long term. Is this, meaning the town isn't required to accept construction of this. Is this, meaning, the town isn't required to accept construction of this project or any other, the town has absolute discretion, meaning the planning board has absolute discretion to deny this permit, even if it meets all of the criteria that have been set forth in the, in the planning guidelines, in bylaw, even if it meets all of those criteria. The board still has the discretion to deny it because it has concerns about any number of different things, and we've provided lots and lots of case law to that effect. It's, you know, illustrating examples where planning boards have either been approved, or where projects and judges have even decided that they thought they'd invented a planning board, and the appeals courts have consistently struck them down. So I just want to make it clear for the board that you folks have complete discretion in terms of denying a permit. In terms of granting a permit, there's a lot more that goes into that for the board, in terms of labor and effort and everything else, you need to make sure that every single criteria, performance standards, and otherwise, has been absolutely met and is documented in your decision that grants that, that grants that permit, and otherwise, it's subject to the expense associated to the town of an appeal process. It's going to be brought by, you know, a whole slew of different people, right? But I think that it's important for the board to understand that appeal process, if it erroneously grants a permit, is significantly more expensive than if it erroneously denies them. Because the chances of it erroneously denying it, if it comes up with any possible legally tangible reason, is zero. An appeal can be asserted, the likelihood of it actually succeeding is zero, if you have any grounds, and I will give you numerous ones, that you can rely on to deny this permit. And if you apply any of that reasoning, and even to some extent, if you don't apply the reasoning, if there's reasoning that justifies it in the record, that denial will be upheld, so I just want to kind of give you, try to give you folks that idea as part of the framework, and I've tried to do that in some of the written materials that I've provided. And to save the board's time, I want to be courteous of that, I really won't go into all the details on it. Obviously, I think it's important to reiterate that the constituents that I represent, which is well over five hundred signatories to petition that's been circulated around the town, as well as surrounding businesses, is not against business in this location. That's not the issue, the issue is this particular project in this location. And the primary concerns that these surrounding people are trying to convey to you, and that these surrounding businesses are trying to convey to you, is their concern about the impact to the character of the neighborhood, as well as a decrease in property values associated with abutting properties and properties across the town, as well as abutting businesses and businesses across the street, and I will provide you with a written email from the president of Reddicker Software, who was vehemently opposed to this. His predecessor, Rich Reddicker, who was the founder of the company, spent millions of dollars building his software business in a way that you can't tell that that's not a house. And he matched all of the architecture around there, and the vet had to do exactly the same thing, spending lots and lots of money on making this building fit, as opposed to what's being done here, which is essentially plucking an urban sprawl scenario right down in the center of the crossroads of this town that prides itself on being upscale rural farming community. A storage facility, let alone two storage facilities, and I understand that they're independent projects, but at the end of the day, the board is going to run into real problems if it denies one and grants the other, because that could be argued as being arbitrary and capricious, that's going to be a very risky proposition in terms of generating litigation. I would suggest to you that denying both, and you, you will need to consider each of them and provide your justifications for denying each one of them independently, but denying both of them together is by far the board's safest and least expensive for the town and everybody else, least expensive proposition. And I would suggest that because there are such significant character of the town issues and property devaluation issues with this project, that if the board decides to grant this project, it's going to have really, really, it's going to set a really bad precedent. Because next time just about anything comes in, the board's going to have a really hard time justifying denying that based on a, based on damage to the town's character and damage to surrounding property values when comparing it to a sprawling storage facility. Right, that's, that's a significant concern that I think the board needs to be thinking about, is this is one project, but if you set the example of allowing this project and waiving character requirements and waiving architectural requirements to allow this project to go forward, and trying to make all these findings, you're setting a bad ground rule for the next time when something comes up that might have even more opposition. So I think it's a really dangerous proposition for the board to be considering doing that. So, to start off with, I think it's really important to take a look at town zoning bylaw, right? The cover of the town zoning bylaw really, I think, illustrates what town of Hampden stands for. The town of Hampden stands for that classic New England look and feel. That's not what this project, however they're trying to camouflage it, does, that just doesn't represent what Hampden stands for. There are areas like Commerce Drive where it's appropriate, it's not in the center of circulation, right, and that's what a planning board's charge is to do, is to decide where the sighting of facilities is appropriate, and I would suggest to you that you have clear evidence from lots and lots of people, well over five hundred people in town, who are telling you this isn't the character that's designed to be protected by the bylaw. And I would suggest to you that one of the, one of the key criteria that the town's bylaw is designed to preclude is urban sprawl, right? And one of the things, one of the major problems with this project is, you'll see, these fences go right up to the property lines, right? The setback requirements in town are stringent, and the requirement is that you can't use those setbacks for anything else. And what they're actually doing is they're putting fencing inside those setback requirements. They're doing grading in those setback requirements, they're not preserving the natural condition in those setback requirements, which right now is mature trees and a very nice stream. And if they did, if they had proposed that, and I think that gives you a completely valid basis for denying the permit on its face. And I'll read you the setback requirements. The setback in section two-one-one-six says, setbacks in other than residential districts shall not be landscaped or left nat, shall be let, sorry, shall be landscaped or left natural as required by the planning board, and may be used only as a setback, not for roads, parking, or any other activity. If they're in their grading all the way up to the property line, that's outside the scope of what a setback is designed to do. Set, the whole purpose of a setback is to protect abutting property owners. And it's the same with both of these parcels, they're using every square foot that they possibly can do, and I think that gives you a clear justification for denying. I also want to clarify, the, my, my role here is not to be opposed to you, I mean, I, I know sometimes it feels that way. That's not, that's not my role, my role here is to try to help illustrate to you what the parameters are for the decisions that you can make and give you the grounds and give you the evidence to be able to say no, and know that that's the right decision for the town, and know that the town will be as protected as it possibly can be from any sort of challenge or litigation from the other side. If the town grants the permit, then at that point, depending on what my clients decide, then I might have to oppose that, and might have to argue to a judge that decision was improper and should be annulled, and either sent back or denied. But at the end of the day, my role here is only to try to help provide you with that evidence, and so let me turn now to kind of provide you in addition to kind of some of the stuff that I've already discussed, to provide you with some of that evidence. So, I've provided you with written submissions, and part of the reason why I objected to the procedure here is although we had some suggestions that there was going to be maybe a denial of the solar aspects, we really haven't had time to process because there was a grant of the ability to just submit the permit without solar. We haven't changed the submission that I submitted without any information at all, so there may be some things that were brought up today that might require additional points, but I think that by the time I'm done, hopefully in the next fifteen, twenty minutes here, you're going to have more than enough ammunition to be able to deny this permit and to ensure that you have a valid basis for doing it. So. Multiple sections of the general provisions of the bylaw, section ten-point-eight, ten-point, which is the criteria, section ten-point-two, which is the purpose, in fact, every section, but particularly the neighborhood and town's character, as well as the neighboring property values justified denial, and so is seven-point-seven, which is the performance standard. Right, and this is supported by the letter from the Board of Selectmen, that I believe was read early on, I think you can read into that letter from the Board of Selectmen, that the Board of Selectmen do not approve of this, of this project, and I think the same is true with the Gardie project, and you have that letter, and to the extent that it's necessary to include that in the record, I think it was the one dated August thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one. I think you can read into that letter that the, that the planning board is, sorry, that the Board of Selectmen is not in favor of granting a permit. I would offer you also.
Yes.
And I know many of you are longtime residents of Hampden, and so you clearly understand how the surrounding buildings and the neighborhood. Can you just put it on the, on, do you guys mind if we use your. And so I have, if you don't have it with you, I do have additional copies that I've labeled.
I have, yeah.
You haven't? And so I've taken the liberty of labeling these, and I would ask that you include these in your finding, hopefully for denial, because I think it would clearly provide any appeals court reviewing this, or any superior court judge reviewing this, the nature and the nature of the buildings that are right around this proposed, these proposed projects, and this proposed project in particular. And so I've just provided you kind of spatially around descriptions of the buildings and the houses that are right around it, so you've got a bagel shop that's again built to look like a house with a standard peaked roof, an insurance agency also in that same building. You then have the vet clinic that they just spent an awful lot of money making to look not like, you know, East Long Meadow or Flat Top Building, right, but a peaked roof. You have the church across the street, you have the Monson Savings Bank. You have Reddicker Software that again spent lots and lots of money, I'm going to provide you with an email from, from Andrew and Alonis, and I also have one from Rich Reddicker, both detailing the expenses and the concerns that they have, Polish National Credit Union. And that doesn't even take into account the most important people here, who are the people who have been to all of these meetings, right, the residential neighborhoods who are right around this proposed project. And they're here because they're concerned about preserving that character in the center of town and preserving their property values that are right around there. And we could have each one stand up and testify their concerns about property values, but I think that's something that the board can take very clear notice of. I think it's self-evident, and I think there's also evidence that I will provide you again with an email from Andrew that outlines his concerns about the impact of his property values. And by the way, he's probably the largest employer in town, and probably one of the biggest taxpayers in town, I don't know specifically exactly how that plays out. But when the board is considering what the value is of this project, I haven't heard any testimony about what the tax value is of this project to the town. And my bet is that it probably pales in comparison to the tax value of an employer like Reddicker Software. And I would suggest to you, the applicant's own submission, notwithstanding the fact that they've again tried to dress this up with, you know, bordering Arborvitae and a fence that they claim nobody's going to be able to see anything, realistically, people know what that is. People know what that facility is, it conveys a significant impression on people driving through town, on people deciding whether they're going to buy in town, and people deciding whether they're going to buy properties that are right around this project, and also these, and also the other project. I have a copy of it, and I've included a copy of it in the submission packet that I gave to you on page. Got so many grounds for. Right, on page ten. I cut out the section from page four of, and with submission, and below it, page eight, the Gardie submission. Talking about the storage units themselves are industry-standard metal prefabricated buildings. Units will be shielded from view from Summers Road with six-foot height evergreen string. They see both attached images of existing building and plans for images of the storage units with solar panels, and I understand that they've taken solar panels off. But at the end of the day, the images that they gave you was the one in the center of what I gave you. Right, of the photo array that I gave you. That's from their own submission, that red, the red doors on the building, and granted, I understand that they've changed the color scheme a little bit to try to make it blend better into the background. But at the end of the day, it's really largely lipstick on fish. And I mentioned to you concerns from Reddicker Software. So here's an email from Andrew Reddicker, sorry, from Andrew and Alonis, who is the president, who's taking over Reddicker Software and going to be leading it into the next, probably twenty years. I have a copy. And I've simply redacted everybody's actual email addresses out of this. But at the end of the day, I'll sum it up, you can read it for yourselves, at the end of the day, the real concern here is you have a software company competing with companies in Lincoln and Concord and Cambridge, and all of those high-end Boston-area suburbs who would never, ever consider citing themselves anywhere near a storage facility, because it conveys a message, right, he's bringing in customers from all over the world, he's recruiting software engineers from across the country to come here, to come to Hampden, to buy houses in Hampden, to work in Hampden. The impression of driving out of that driveway and looking down the barrel of a storage facility is significantly different than driving down the driveway and looking across it, what, at least now is an old nursery that needs some TLC, right, but it still conveys a different impression. But it still conveys a different impression. He's tried to capture that in his email. And what I did was I summarized the telephone conversation that we'd had with him, that Jeff Frasetti. Who was essentially the chair of the citizens opposing the storage facility coalition. So I summarized an email discussion, an email, a discussion that we had had with him. And I wanted to make it clear that he actually endorsed and authorized us to present this to you this evening. And I've done so in that email. I think one of the things that may get lost and I, that I don't want to get lost here is the fact that. Rich Reddicker and we did have, unfortunately, he's not feeling well at our place available at this point. He's probably not. We had tried to have him be available, but unfortunately he's got a cold and had to get COVID tests. So just, just couldn't pull it off. And he has been available at numerous prior other meetings, as has Andrew as well. But neither one of them was available to make it this evening. So I wanted to offer these, this is clear evidence of the concern about the property values. And the decrease in the property values as well as the character. I mean, Rich Reddicker built his business here because of its character. He spent millions of dollars more than he would have had to spend somewhere else to build Hampden. And he went way out of his way and spent lots and lots of money to make it look like a house. Right, you can't tell that that's a, how big is that, thirty thousand square foot facility? I think is the size of the addition, thirty thousand square foot addition on top of at least a ten or twelve thousand square foot initial building that was put on in the nineteen. Nineteen ninety eight and then it was. And then it was expanded in around two thousand twelve or something like that. Right, so this is someone who's made a major, major investment in Hampden, in his business in Hampden. Who is opposing this, he's not opposed to business going in. He's looking for businesses that are going to be complementary to his business. And so a tech company, some other complementary business is really the right thing to do. In the, in these locations that are right across the street. So this demonstrates. And unfortunately, Rich can't be here tonight, but Rich is a forty three year resident of Hampden. And so he clearly knows and understands what the character of Hampden is. That's why he's opposing this, because this isn't the character of him. And that's the same thing with the signatories on that five hundred plus person petition. This isn't the character of him. And respectfully, both of these applicants have essentially said, look. These are what they are, they're metal storage units, there's nothing we can do about it. Again, they are trying to dress them up a little bit, but at the end of the day, they can't change. The fact that it's counter to the architecture, it's counter to the character and it's damaging to the property values of the neighborhood. The case law is very, very clear. That each of those independently are legally valid, fully supportable grounds for denying permit. And denying special permit and specifically for denying and would be grounds for specifically denying this special permit. And frankly, from my position. Would actually preclude the board from granting this special permit. Because the evidence is such that it's irrefutable, that the damage is not something that can be remedied by offense and some treatment. And I think the other thing that I would point out is the new plan that they've offered. I'm not sure whether. Be eaten or not, but if you look at the existing grades, right, they're talking about grading all the way up to the edge of the property line. Right, I mean, they're going to be, granted, they're going to be cutting to try to pull the water in. But at the end of the day, there's no reason that this whole plan needs to use the entire footprint. This might be a different conversation if they had come to us with a completely different plan that was more constrained instead of. The broad use of the entire property. And the hundred foot setbacks that they would have had if they were using solar, the footprint would have been about this big. Which is one of the reasons I'm sure why they decided that they were going to take that out.
I'm going to. Ask you counselor, we're at about ten of eight, okay? I've got a resident that would like to ask question and again, I think I'm going to ask if, you know, counsel would. I'm sorry, I, so if you would like to wrap it up. Or.
Yeah, I can, you know, what I can do is I can, I can break for a minute. Let me consult with my client while the questions are being asked. And if I have additional points that I'd like to make, I'd ask a little bit of leeway considering. Okay. The amount of time that's been granted to the applicants to present their case, which has been now meeting in three quarters. And so I think it's important that they're, are at the.
My name is Joe Sivili, I'm really glad that you're here. And I really want to show our appreciation for the effort you guys have put into this, you spend a lot of time. You're reading a lot of materials, you're sitting there listening to another festival. I personally, I really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Fundamentally, in my mind, the question is just this. When the needs of the citizens, their quiet enjoyment. Clean water, fresh air are in conflict with the needs of a business to make money. Which of those entities has priority? The citizens or the business? So the fundamental question for the legacy of the planning board and the town of Hampden. Is how are we going to establish our priorities going forward? Are our priorities to satisfy the needs and desires of the citizens? Or the needs and desires of the business to make more money? I don't dispel the notion that capitalism is designed to make money. But it's not designed to make money at the expense of the citizens and at the expense of the citizens admired. So I would urge you to vote against this proposition and really and truly represent the interests of the citizens. And have as your legacy, the fact that this is probably going to be the most important vote you're going to make in your time on the planning board. And you can either deny this applicant and be a heroine of, or you can approve this applicant and carry on the legacy of the scarlet letters of self-storage. For the rest of your tenures. So I would urge you, please, to vote against this.
Yeah, if I could, and I want to kind of, again, point out. That his point is very well made, right? I mean, the top of the, the little photo vignette that I've given you is pretty much lays it out and captures his point. And I think would provide you with additional basis to include this photo array in your decision. Hopefully denying, denying the project. Storage shouldn't profit, profit at the expense of the rest of the neighborhood, of the towns and of the emitters. And kind of laid that out pretty clearly. And I think that. One of the other things that ties to the legal. Underpinnings of your position here is any concerns about. The future results of the permeable asphalt. Or the impact to the water table, or the impact to property values. All of those, any concern that you may have is a perfectly valid reason for denying this permit. And the case law that I've given you has established that very, very clearly. Concerns about the future impact are specifically stated basis for denial. And I think to the extent that they're, you know, just, just so you know, this is not something new or unique that you folks are wrestling with, right? Storage unit facilities are being proposed across the country. And they are consistently being opposed on the same ground, on the, on the issue of not meeting the town's character and property values. And look, I have right here from Crab Creek, North Carolina, a very recent. Property appraisal report. And I can certainly offer it to you, it was given to us by the opponents down there. Who had exactly the same concerns. But I don't want to have to put my clients to the expense of having to get an expert to tell you what I think you already know. Which is the character impact and the property diminution in value for the town generally, as well as the emitters. Is absolutely irreconcilable with this project and mandates denial. And I would urge you to please put an end to this tonight. Please take a vote, please rely on the evidence and make your decision strong and support it with the evidence that we've provided for you. And again. We could if we had to, but I don't want to have to get spent thousands of dollars on appraisal. I think we've given you plenty of evidence to. Support your decision and we hope that you will take a vote and decide to do so. Thank you.
Just a couple of points, I understand the seats you sit in are a very difficult seat. And having sat in that body, I understand there's a lot of crowd. But I, I couldn't differ more with counsel. I just quoted them, any concern you may have is valid to deny. Let me remind you, that's not the law. And you saw a very highly publicized case recently with the Enset project at Springfield on the riverfront. Where the city council denied him the special permit. And the court overturned it when we went into the court because they didn't have valid grounds to deny. This isn't about threatening leverage of scarlet letters, it's not about threatening the law. It's about what is right under your zoning bylaws. As a community, you came together and instituted bylaws and you're to follow the bylaws. We're not asking to deviate from them, we're not asking you to alter from them. In fact, we've recognized a glitch in your bylaws, if you have one regarding solar, withdrew it and trying to be collaborative. We didn't come to you and say we want to take down the house and maximize the use of the land, which we easily could have. We are not liking, nor am I going to prepare myself to any other submitting they have. And I suggest to you it's inappropriate to do so. And I know this board has made several comments that they won't do so, that they'll do them independently. But look at where we're situated, we are not a corner lot. And before I came over to this meeting today, I spent about twenty, twenty-five minutes walking and then driving around the other side of my property. And I saw a building with big trucks, plows, all sitting out there overgrown. I saw strip plows across the street, you know, with all kinds of various uses, cars coming and out. I saw trash business on the other side of the street. So let's talk about what this is, this is the urban center of mixed use area, which you want to make it as desirable as possible. Within the confines of your, of your bylaw. Now, I'm only going to repeat this one more time just because it's worth repeating. The site we talk about and we're talking, there's no expert here telling you whether you want to pay for them or not, that there's going to be a diminution of value of property values. I suggest to you, you draw a reasonable conclusion, the exact opposite is going to happen. Because instead of having a vacant parcel like you have now, you'll have a beautiful house cleaned up. Looks like a residential storefront and less than anybody would know unless they enter the back. Just like Mr. Reddicker, who thought about this years and years ago. He designed it so it doesn't look like a business, it kind of looks like a, you know, a nice house out in the area. We're no different, we're trying to find a collaborative use and work in harmony with the town, not against it. And the most important aspect tonight, and I was listening to one comment about Mr. Reddicker's trying to, it sounds like he's an incredibly successful person, he's been a great citizen of the town. No, we take nothing from him, in fact, we want to enhance it. But he's talking about bringing all these people from the West Coast and all these people to draw them into the community. All statistics tell you they need storage. It's, it's a way of. This compliment is.
Quiet.
So if you stop and think about what we're talking about here. Take one step back and let's talk about the aesthetics of this project. From the streetscape, you see this black fence, proper landscaping, look at your zoning bylaws. Landscape plan is not in the setbacks, perhaps he's referring to the original plan where the fence was up front. We gave you the new reef, refined one, it's not in the setbacks, it's in compliance with your zoning ordinance. So when you go through it, ask yourself, what is practical? What are the other potential uses that could be here that are, are much more noxious, obnoxious, I guess I should say, to the community? Much more taxing, which are not a low, low impact. And, and, and walk yourself through that and also look at where this property, property is situated. This is not the property on the corner along Metal Street and Summers. And this is a property situated below, you know, these other properties dropped down with a six foot height fence. I think when you look, you walk through the, the careful attention we paid to this plan to try to maximize the benefits to the town. Last time I'll repeat it. Preserving Stevens' home, one of the oldest homes in all of Hampden. Prevent, preserving the significant five trees. Doing an aesthetic plan so it looks like a residential landscape with a very loose, very low use, only five parking space property with extremely low traffic. Increase, I'd suggest to you, I don't know that you're going to find a better use for this property. Given its nature of the commercial use it has. For those reasons and obviously all the other reasons you articulated, we'd ask that you approve it with appropriate conditions, which I'm sure you've gone through in the book.
And respectfully, if his concern was really the preservation of this building, there's nothing that requires this project for him to do that. That's something that could have been done long ago, that's something he can still do. And I also would suggest, the case law is actually very clear and the town's own bylaw is very, very clear. Section ten point two, it says, it shall not mean the planning board, special permit granting authority, shall not, in quotes, shall not grant any special permit unless it fines. The presumption is against granting permits. It's very clear.
We're, we're going to cut off any more conversation. I'd like to continue. This public hearing. I don't know if we've got a date, I'd like to continue it.
Is there anything specific that's needed prior to a vote?
We're not going to vote, I'm sorry. No, I, I said no more questions, I'm sorry. So.
Is that something that needs to be voted on?
What's that?
Whether there needs to be a continuance or whether the rest of the board is ready to vote?
Would you like? I, I'll ask the board, are you ready to vote tonight? And are you agreeable to a continuance? I mean, listen, I don't want to put the board through any more of this. I'm cutting off because there's a couple of requirements that I have to, I have commitments. And to be honest with you, a couple of these members of the board, they have children and I'm sure that they'd like to see them. So. I'd like to know if you've got.
What, what information, what more information would you need in order to make this?
We're not going, I'm not going to discuss it right now. We're, we're done discussion. And I'm asking.
Yeah, what, what dates are you this? Try and stick to the, if we could stick to our normal meeting schedule, this is becoming.
Yeah. Here it does. Okay. Our next meeting, regular meeting, okay, is on the twenty seventh. It's a Wednesday.
Twenty seven.
Twenty seven. Yeah, we have a regular agenda, would you like to do that before this?
Probably, the quick things, we think it's quicker. So if we start, what time is it?
Six, six, okay.
I don't care.
This one, this, no, no. The public, because we've got a couple of things, we're going to have a couple of things at six o'clock, so I'm saying around six fifteen.
Ten twenty seven.
Yes, ten twenty seven, six fifteen, and I got to have you sign. And again, I apologize to everybody I know. But there is some questions, I'm sure that's going to come up. You know, some of this.
You know, some of this. Continue this hearing at ten twenty seven, uh, twenty twenty one, six fifteen.
Okay.
Executive, all, all in favor of? And, um, at this time, I'm going to, uh, adjourn the meeting and we will continue ten twenty seven. Thank you.